I think, yeah, I think we'll get started. Um, so first, I'm Brooklyn.
I'm Madeline.
And we're the event coordinators for our club, where it helps everyone make allies. Um, and we're super happy that everyone got to join today, um, for our second official town hall meeting. So, thank you all for coming. Um, before moving into our meeting, I would like to point out that today is Bell Let's Talk Day, as I wear my, um, fancy hat here tonight. So, I just, it's really important to recognize this and understand that this conversation, um, and we need to keep having it. And I would also like to point out that you can help donate towards Canadian Mental Health Initiatives by simply watching, sharing, retweeting a video produced by Bell Let's Talk Organization. Um, if using Instagram, be sure to use the proper, um, Bell emoji or Twitter as, as well. And their Instagram is bell underscore let's talk. So, we'd also like to bring to your attention to resources at Brock University that I will post in the chat box tonight. And there you'll find support services, mental health information, along with after-hours crisis resources.
Great, thanks, Brooklyn, for that. Um, so just to quickly give a little introduction about Shema, I feel like a lot of us do know a little bit, but, um, just to quickly give a little bit of information. So, our mission is to cultivate a collective sense of belonging, a diversified community, and a unified approach to constant education and self-improvement across the entirety of the Brock Spema program and beyond. Um, we're excited, excited to be able to host virtual events where we can get together with our peers and faculty, um, while we're all away from campus.
Yeah, so the purpose of our town hall, um, is to help provide students the opportunity to get to know faculty and others for management students beyond the classroom in an open and safe and informed environment. We understand, as we were talking about during these times, it's, it's really hard to form that connection with your peers and professors. So, we just wanted to provide an open and safe platform to, uh, do just that.
Um, and just, just so, uh, sorry for some, uh, instructions for this meeting. Use the raise your hand button, um, at the top of the screen if you have a comment or question, just to ensure that no one interrupts each other. Um, Brooklyn and I will be reading out the questions that have already been submitted before. And if more questions arise, please feel free to use the chat box. Also, please just be respectful of others speaking, and of course, no inappropriate comments.
Yes, that little thing was just me, I just put the, the resource link in the chat box. Um, but yeah, that being said, we'd like to quickly introduce Dr. Donnelly. So, Dr. Donnelly is a professor here at Brock, and she teaches professional engagement for the sport industry, which is a first-year class, and power politics and sport policy, which is a fourth-year class. So, an interesting fact, uh, she's the co-founder and now serves on the advisory board of the Girls on Track Foundation, whose mission is to foster important life skills in girls through participation in roller derby as skaters and decision-makers. But, I want to take away too much from Dr. Donnelly, so now's your time to shine in the virtual.
No pressure. Thank you for the introduction, and thank you for inviting me. I'm really excited to, uh, be able to meet some students I haven't had the opportunity to meet yet and connect with some students that, uh, I already, uh, have met. So, that's always nice. Um, I don't really want to spend too much time talking about myself. I'm, uh, you know, looking forward to having more of a conversation with you, but I just wanted to give you kind of a sense of where I come from, like, coming to Brock and coming to sport management. Um, I don't have any degrees in sport management. Uh, that's not my route into the discipline. So, uh, I'm a sociologist. All of my degrees are in sociology. Um, but really, since, uh, I was an undergraduate student, I have, uh, whenever I had the opportunity to choose a topic for a research paper or a project, um, I almost always wrote something about women in sport. Uh, so that has been an interest of mine. Um, like I said, since my kind of formative time as an undergraduate student, I did an honors thesis, uh, for my undergraduate degree at McGill. Um, I looked at gender equality in recreational athletics at McGill. So, this was a study of, um, like, all of the intramural sports and then the, you know, like, classes, the aerobic classes and all of that stuff that was being offered. Um, and I interviewed the athletic director, and I interviewed a few other people, and looked at the cost for intramurals versus, um, classes. Uh, and, right, like, the registration for them. So, probably not surprisingly, men athletes were way overrepresented in intramural sports. Women students were way overrepresented in classes, um, which meant actually that women were putting way more money into, uh, recreational athletics than men, because women were paying, right, in an individual basis for the classes that they were taking, whereas there's like one registration fee for an intramural team. So, that cost per person is significantly lower. Um, so I've always had an interest in kind of looking at, um, kind of going beyond the numbers when we're thinking about gender equality. So, not just how many men, how many women, right? Like, how many men's events, how many women's events? But actually looking also at what are the conditions of participation, right? That are, um, and how might they be different for men and women? Um, and that, uh, really is something that I kind of continue to work on, um, in a series of gender audits of the Olympic Games. And actually, a book that I'm working on, sort of, uh, right now, um, which is all about looking very specifically at the Olympic program. Um, so the Olympic program refers to all of the sports and events that are contested at any Olympic Games. And so, um, you have sports like cycling and track and field and swimming. Within those sports, they have different disciplines. So, in swimming, you have, right, like, what you would think of as swimming, just regular in the pool. Then there's the artistic swimming, which is synchronized swimming. There's open water swimming out in nature. The long-distance swims. Uh, in cycling, you have BMX, you have road cycling, track cycling, um, mountain biking. So, uh, within each of these, right? So, it's about looking at, at one level, how many men and women go to each edition of the Olympic Games, right, as athletes? How many events are available to them? So, how many medals are there for women and how many medals for men? But then also looking at, um, do men and women play by the same rules? Do they use the same equipment? Um, you know, is the structure of the competition different? So, one of the things that is, uh, consistently different in some sports is the quota number. So, the number of athletes who even come into the competition. So, um, in women's boxing, you have, like, maybe 12 athletes in each weight category. Um, the weight categories have been changing, but initially you had 10 weight categories for men and three weight categories for women. Um, so, you would have about 30 women athletes in boxing at the Games and 250 men, right? So, that's not even just having more weight categories, that's more men in each weight category than there are on the women's side. So, looking at all of those kinds of things, some other things that you might, uh, be able to think of right away, right? Like, no body checking in women's hockey. Um, also, women are required to wear a full face shield in hockey, um, ice hockey. Men only, uh, are required to wear a half shield. That's international hockey. Um, so, all of those kinds of things, uh, are the things that I'm, uh, really, uh, working on now and kind of thinking about, what does that mean? Um, and the thing that I always go back to is, people make these decisions, right? There's nothing natural about saying, you know, "In the 25-meter pistol event in shooting, women's pistol will weigh less than the men's pistol, right? And the barrel length will be shorter." Like, people sat in a room and they decided, "These are gonna be the differences," right? Um, and thinking about how they did that, right? Are there actual physiological reasons for having these kinds of differences? Um, so like in volleyball, women play with a net that's hung at a shorter height than the men. So, you think, okay, well, maybe that, you know, women are on average shorter than, you know, men on average. Um, but if that was the reason for it, then why isn't the net in basketball hung at a different height for women? Right? Like, there's just no consistency across sports that would really justify the differences that exist. Um, and one of the reasons that they often seem to be in place is simply to differentiate the men's and women's competition, right? To have men and women play, uh, in different ways that can't be directly compared. And so, um, that's what I'm doing now. Uh, I come to Brock. So, I did my, uh, undergraduate at McGill University. I did a master's at Queens University. I did my, uh, PhD at McMaster. That's when I started playing roller derby, actually started skating, um, as part of my dissertation research. So, uh, that's one of the very fun things about a sociology of sport perspective is get to study really anything that you might be interested in. So, roller derby has been that thing for me, um, that I started doing just for research, and then it, it kept doing it, uh, even after I stopped kind of formally collecting data for my dissertation. Um, when I finished my PhD, I spent a couple of years in Los Angeles at the University of Southern California on a postdoctoral fellowship. Then I spent a year at Syracuse University. Then I spent four years at Kent State University. Uh, these are all things that are advantages that you have when you are a dual citizen. So, that facilitated, uh, working in the US. But my goal really always was to end up back in Canada. Um, and so, uh, having the opportunity to come to Brock was really exciting and has been a great experience so far. Um, so Brooklyn mentioned my work with Girls on Track Foundation. Uh, before that, I was on the Board of Directors for the Women's Flat Track Derby Association, which, um, doesn't necessarily mean much to people outside of roller derby, right? But the WFTDA is the Global Governing Body of Women's Flat Track Roller Derby. It has over 400 member leagues, uh, on six continents. So, um, it truly is global. It, uh, you know, there are tens of thousands of athletes kind of represented within the Women's Flat Track Derby Association. And it continues to operate, uh, in a far more skater or athlete-driven way than any other sport governing body that I am currently aware of. Um, athletes actually make the decisions about the rule set and the way the sport's gonna be represented and all of those things that, um, athletes are so often excluded from, uh, in sport governance. So, during my time there, I'm really proud of the gender statement, uh, that we developed. So, initially, the WFTDA had adopted, um, a really, uh, Olympic-style gender policy, uh, which was a hormone-based policy. Um, and, uh, while I was there, we rewrote that policy and the, uh, organization quite unanimously ratified it to have just a self-declaration policy. Um, so the language in there is, uh, "If women's flat track roller derby is the version and composition of roller derby, um, right, that makes sense for you, this is the place for you," kind of thing. So, no, uh, physiological, physical, hormonal surgery requirements for participation in women's flat track derby. So, I think that that, um, yeah, that's definitely something I'm really proud of. Um, if anybody's interested in sport for development, uh, seems like a million years ago now. Uh, I had the opportunity to work for the organization that's now called Right to Play. It was at the time called Olympic Aid. It was there kind of during the, uh, name transition. Uh, so, um, that was really interesting to be in Canada, kind of at the beginning of some really, um, formal kind of sport for development. So, at that point, we were sending coaches from Canada and the US mostly, uh, into refugee and internally displaced persons camps, um, starting in, uh, Cote d'Ivoire and Angola, and then, uh, expanding from there for a long time. So, um, you can definitely, uh, chat about sport for development as well. So, lots of stuff. Um, but, yeah, I would love to know, uh, what you all are interested in and what, yeah, what I can share that would be useful for you.
Amazing. Well, thank you so much for a little bit of an explanation about yourself and your, um, vast, uh, experiences. Um, so we have some great questions here all set for you. Um, again, before we proceed, if anyone has any more questions, feel free to add them to the chat box or, uh, use the raise your hand button, and we will get to you. Um, so our first question that we have here is, uh, what does your position with the Girls on Track Foundation entail?
Yeah, so, um, it has, uh, changed over time. So, I was, I am, I guess, one of the founders. So, uh, a few of us got together and, um, it's always really interesting as someone who is very, um, invested in sport, uh, as an athlete and a fan, but also as an academic, right? Like, when people learn about things that are happening in sport and they're really shocked and appalled, and it's kind of exciting, because then you get to remember, like, oh, right, that is really bad, right? Like, the huge dropout numbers of girls from sport through, um, adolescence into teen years is really, um, yeah, I mean, it's just, it's a massive decrease in participation at a time when we know everyone would benefit from, right, sport participation. Um, but, maybe not the version of sport participation that really gets emphasized right now, right? Like, a really kind of organized sport. Um, a real sort of funneling of people into a very small number of sports, right? Uh, there's a wide variety of sports, but not many of them are really accessible in a lot of ways, depending on where you live or, you know, your, um, the resources that are available to you. So, um, I had, uh, these, uh, friends in roller derby who were just kind of discovering this dropout rate, right? Like, this adolescent dropout rate. And they were, uh, rightfully appalled, um, and wanted to figure out what, what we sort of within the roller derby community could do about it. There are some, um, junior roller derby is a big thing right now. So, skaters start skating as early as about six years old. Um, and they're terrifying when they become teenagers and graduate to play with the rest of us who didn't start playing until we were much, much older. Um, but, yeah, so there are a few leagues that are really successful at retaining their skaters, even through those, right? Like, the ages where we really see girls kind of drop out of sport. So, um, there's an attempt there to, like, for me, sort of academically, my project is, like, what is it, right? Like, what's happening in those leagues and on those teams that is helping to retain girls? And how do we replicate that in other sport and physical activity spaces? So, that's sort of, um, an ongoing thing that I'm thinking about. Uh, and the program itself, so the foundation has raised money and then offered, uh, grants to various organizations to do things to, um, attract and/or retain girls in roller derby particularly. So, um, in some cases, that's grants for equipment, so that there's loaner equipment for skaters who want to come in, uh, but may not be able to afford skates, um, particularly when you're in that age, right? Where you're still growing, and so you need skates now, but you might need new skates again in a year from now. Um, so that kind of thing. Uh, others that are developing kind of programs where they're offering, um, like a roller derby plus, right? So, like, roller derby is the draw, and then there's some kind of, um, programming alongside that that may be focused on, uh, self-confidence or, you know, some other aspect of, uh, you know, preparing for work or whatever it is. So, um, my current role on the advisory board is kind of liaising with organizations that have gotten the funding and seeing how they are currently using it, you know, answering any questions they might have, kind of serving as a bit of a resource for them. So, right now, it's very quiet because nobody's skating. So, there is not much happening. But yeah, that's my current role, uh, on the advisory board. Yeah, so that's Girls on Track.
Wow, that sounds amazing. I mean, you're trying to increase participant, participation rates and also help foster important life skills. Um, that's definitely something very crucial, crucial. And actually, Madeline and I are doing, um, a project, and we're researching the lack of women, um, in sport participation, um, or leadership roles. So, we're actually doing the leadership roles, and it's just awful, the percentages that we've found as in CEOs, board members, um, just in general management positions is so low, it's ridiculous. So, it's definitely something that needs to change. Um, so you are definitely being a part of that change, which is absolutely amazing. So, props to you.
Thank you.
Our next question is, cut, is twofold. So, what is your favorite part about being a professor? And have you always known you wanted to be a professor?
Um, so I will start with the second question first. Um, I, yes, so I grew up with, um, a dad who is a professor and a mom who was an elementary school teacher. So, uh, education always looked like it was in my future, in some capacity. Um, so I feel like I was really lucky going into my undergraduate degree knowing, like, already having a sense that something like graduate school was an option. Um, and that, you know, you didn't have to kind of just be finished after a bachelor's degree if you weren't really finished. And that, in fact, right, like, the further you go, the more you're able to focus on things that you're really excited about and that really kind of, um, you know, that you get to choose and frame the way that you're approaching them. So, uh, yeah, I mean, I did always kind of have a sense, uh, even as I was doing my undergrad, that I would do grad school after that. I did, uh, I worked for Olympic Aid in a year that I took between my undergraduate degree and my masters. So, that was nice to take a bit of a break, because I went straight from high school, um, dating myself, uh, from grade 13 to university. Uh, so then I took a year after my bachelor's and went on and did my masters. Um, and then obviously my PhD. So, yeah, I mean, I kind of always had a sense that this was the space that I wanted to be in. Um, and it is that, uh, like I was saying, kind of at the beginning, like, that flexibility that you have. So, this isn't a nine-to-five job, right? Like, this is, um, something where you do really get to organize your own schedule. But when you're working on something that you really like and feel really strongly about, um, you feel very lucky to do that. Like, I know, I know not everyone gets to be, uh, in a position that they, you know, that they really like and that they, you know, aren't sort of counting down necessarily to the weekend, right? And I mean, the flip side of that, like I was saying, is that weekends don't really mean that much. You know, work happens on the weekends, it happens at night, it happens all the time. Um, so, there's that piece of it. Um, so what do I like best about being a professor? Um, I like that in my contract, so the university's expectation of me is, um, my responsibilities are divided into three categories. So, uh, teaching, research, and service. So, I like that, um, range of activities. So, I mean, I love research, research is my, um, I would say kind of my happy place, uh, in terms of those three things. But, I have over a lot of years really learned to kind of love teaching. And my research becomes more meaningful when I get to share it in the classroom and talk to students about it. And when I'm teaching, that obligates me to really stay up to date on what's happening in the areas that I'm teaching about. Um, and I get to find out what you all are interested in, right? And the approaches that you're taking to think about things. And that is useful, because that means I can't kind of get stuck in something. I have to always kind of be addressing, well, things are changing, right? So, it's important to consider them, um, as they are changing, right? And not sort of think, well, when I started this work, right? Like, things looked like this. So, uh, that's how I'll always do it. Um, so that part I really like. And then the service piece, um, for me, so that service in the department. So, uh, all faculty members sit on a committee in the department. I currently sit on the undergraduate committee. And we, um, make some decisions about curriculum. So, if a professor wants to propose a new course, that kind of comes through us. And we then recommend it to the department or not. Um, so that's really interesting. It also has helped me, as a newer faculty member, to learn the program, right? Like, where I can only teach so many courses. So, it's nice to know kind of more what's happening in the program generally and what you all are being exposed to while you're here. Um, and the other part of the service piece for me is that I sit on the university's Research Ethics Board, uh, on the social sciences side. So, um, that's something that I've done for a while. I actually started, uh, as a student member on the Research Ethics Board at McMaster while I was doing my PhD. Um, and that's, uh, something that I really enjoy, and particularly in the realm of qualitative research. But, um, looking at research, uh, as the Research Ethics Board is supposed to from the perspective of the research participants and, right, like, really making decisions about, is it okay to ask people to do this, right? Like, does this make sense? Is what you're saying you're going to accomplish by doing it? Does that actually make sense? Like, are you actually going to accomplish that? Or is there the potential that you're, um, you know, not asking the right questions or not talking to the right people? Um, so that is something that I enjoy. And then that gives me a bit of a window into research that's happening across the university. Um, because applications come into that committee and they get sort of sent out to reviewers. So, I read stuff that's coming from, uh, everywhere, really. Education, leisure and rec, uh, kinesiology, business, all over the place. So, that's fun, too.
Well, it's great to hear, um, about all the different sides of, uh, of your position at Brock, because sometimes as students, we forget that our professor is more than just our professor and that there's so much also going on. So, it's really interesting to hear about all that, um, that you do and you're a part of, um, and that you find passion within each section of that. So, I think that's really great. Um, so on to our next question here. So, what suggestions do you have on how to correct gender marking in sports? Perhaps more specifically, being more diverse with the marketing strategies?
Yeah, so, correct, was it gender marketing, did you say? Gender marking or marking, okay?
Sorry, I'm on mute. Uh, the question here says marking.
Okay, so, um, if that is not a term you have heard before, gender marking is what, is how we talk about the fact that, you know, um, we tend to refer to the FIFA World Cup, right? And then we refer to the Women's World Cup. And you have, you know, in the NCAA in the US, you have March Madness and Women's March Madness, right? Um, and that kind of gender marking, where it's only, where it is often, right? Women's sport that is being marked as for a particular gender, there's a real kind of othering that happens there, right? Like, the World Cup, that's the World Cup. And then we all are supposed to know that that's men playing, right? Because that's what's normal. And then if it's women playing, then you have to say it's the Women's World Cup, right? So that people know, this is women playing soccer, right? Um, so it's one of those things that feels sort of astonishing that we're still talking about it in 2021. Um, sociologists of sport have been kind of calling attention to this sort of, um, issue in language, uh, for a long time, going back to, I mean, at least the 1980s, I would say, is sort of when people start really, um, paying attention to it. And I think, so, I have two kind of perspectives about it. I think one of the things that's really important to consider is who makes the decision about what to call an event or how to name a team, right? So, another example of gender marking, um, the high school that I went to, um, was Nelson High School. And, uh, all the men's teams were called the Lords, like Lord Nelson. Uh, the Lords and then the Knights for the junior teams. So, the women's teams were called the Lady Lords, which is not a thing. Um, but, you know, it's very much that, like, Um, but you know, it's very much that like uh, I can't even think of any good ones, right? But where there's like some kind of diminutive on the women's side, right? Like the um, soldiers and the soldierys, right? Like that kind of thing. So I mean, those are also examples of gender marking. Um, I think when those decisions get made by predominantly men and in kind of the mainstream sport structures, that's really problematic, right? I think there are some differences when you have women's teams organized and run by women that choose to name themselves in ways that emphasize gender, right? So um, I've done a little bit of work on this in roller derby. And I think um, there's a way, so initially, this has changed over time. But initially, most leagues named themselves, um, you know, in Hamilton, it was the Hammer City Roller Girls. Here it was Niagara Roller Girls. Um, in Los Angeles, it was the Angel City Derby Girls, right? Um, so that naming and especially the use of the term girls, right? Like typically, we would say, well, that's not cool, right? This is a bunch of women athletes and they're called girls, right? Um, but when it's the women athletes themselves who choose those names, it's harder to say that's wrong or that's really problematic, right? And so you have to do a bit more work to kind of understand what's happening there, I think. I think there's an element of being socialized to think that that's right, like in part how you name women's sport. I think that there's a piece of it that was saying this is Derby Girls and then really marking that this was a space for women, right? And doing some boundary setting there. Because if you don't know about roller derby, um, before this version of roller derby, which starts in the early two thousands, roller derby was always coed. So you had men and women on the same teams. Um, they didn't play directly against each other. So you would have women from one team against women from the other team on the track, right? And then the men would go out. Um, but this version, so then that happens nineteen thirties and nineteen fifties. And it's popular in the nineteen seventies. When it comes back in the early two thousands is the first time that people organize roller derby, right? And women organize roller derby for women only. So I think that that naming piece, it's different depending on the context. Um, when it's the NBA working with the WNBA to, you know, name the Dream and the Mystics. And like all of these names that are really kind of feminized versions of men's sports teams name, sport team names. I think that that is definitely something that needs more attention. And I'm always going to advocate for consultation with athletes, right? Like, I'm not going to tell another woman athlete, like, you shouldn't play on a team called the Mystics. Like that, if that's, if that works for her, right? Like, and she feels uh, strong and empowered and that that's an identity that resonates with her, great. Um, but yeah, all of that to say, I think, right? Like knowing who's making the decisions is so important. And so then doing education, I think, with sport organizations around how they're naming women's teams, how they're referring to their women's teams, right? Um, both formally, like in their PR and marketing kind of stuff, but also informally around the club, right? Like um, if you, you know, refer to like, oh, it's the girls out there, right? But you're talking about a group of women, right? But you don't also refer to the men's teams as the boys are out on the field, right? Then um, there are real issues there. You're uh, consistently through language, kind of minimizing women's participation, right? And what women are doing as athletes. And that is certainly uh, something that needs to be addressed. I think we see, I mean, Brock is a nice place to be, it's just badgers across the board, right? There is no gendering uh, of that. Um, but yeah, I think uh, it's definitely something that we need to pay attention to um, and let people know, like, hey, that's, it's twenty twenty-one. Stop doing that. No more Lady Lords. That's just dumb, right?
Yeah, for sure. That's a pretty large topic that I feel like hasn't been talked about very much. I myself have not heard very much about it, so I'm glad that that was brought up. You kind of, I just had like a back question from what you said. Um, and I'm sorry if I say this weirdly, but I was trying to wonder how how we can improve on this consistency. So we have basically making sure we understand the differences between, like the example with the NBA. Okay, so it's National Basketball Association. Why does, it's professional basketball. So then the women have to have Women's National Basketball Association. So why isn't it Men's National Basketball Association? If that's really what they wanted, because the main difference is it's not coed. That's literally the difference um, between that. Or having groups specifically for wh- whichever group it may be. So for instance, for women, um, to basically empower them and build, give them, teach them skills for a specific purpose, rather than just, you know, having the professional side. And it doesn't really make sense. I don't know if I phrase that properly, but basically getting that consistency of having those groups that are for exact purpose and then just professional sports. Um, why are we changing the team names that much? So I don't know where you'd start. I'm I'm assuming with who's in charge, like you said, but that's what my pro- that's what my brain is processing right now.
Well, and I really tried to train myself. So like when I'm teaching, when I'm talking to friends, you know, like I'll try to always say the Men's World Cup. If I'm going to say the Women's World Cup, then I'm going to say the Men's World Cup, right? Um, so I think that piece of it is important. What you were saying, right, is the key. Like if you just call it the NBA and then the Women's League is the WNBA, then what you do is you normalize basketball as a men's sport, right? Because the National Basketball Association is men. And if women are going to play professional basketball, then that's when we have to explicitly say Women's National Basketball Association, right? So trying to um, for ourselves, like move past some of that stuff in our own language and the way that we're referring to things. Um, it's so hard, right? Like, you know, do one Google search of like, you know, strong athlete or like professional basketball player and you'll see that it's hundreds of thousands of hits, right, of men. Um, so I mean, that in itself is an issue. The way that we're training kind of artificial intelligence and algorithms, right? Like with our already existing prejudices and sort of um, really uh, unequal ideas about what men and women do and are supposed to do uh, is an issue. But yeah, I think um, like I said, I think it is absolutely about kind of figuring out what's happening at the decision-making level. And then also just not painting with too broad a brush, right? Like not saying it is forever and always wrong to name a sport as a women's sport, right? Like if the women ice climbers want to start a club and they call it Chicks With Picks, that's their prerogative, right? Like that's their thing, so they can call it whatever they want, right? If it's like Mountain Equipment Co-op starts a group, right? And they're like, you know, this is going to be the women-only group. We're calling it Chicks With Picks, that I take issue with, right? Like that, that I have questions about. Um, you know, it's the um, reclaiming of language, right? Versus the continued use of language to um, enforce inequalities and differences, I think. Does that kind of address what you were asking me?
Yeah, yes, yes, thank you. I I had all these thoughts going through my head and I was trying to phrase it properly. Um, but definitely agree with everything you're saying and the use of language is so important. Um, it's very true. And I was going to say something, but I forget. So I'm just going to move on to the next question. Um, so could you explain why you personally feel that diversity and inclusion is important? And how you ensure diversity and inclusion are implemented within the workplace? Or perhaps even in your everyday life?
Yeah, so um, I think they're important because they are human rights, right? Like there are enshrined in United Nations Human Rights Declarations, right? The United Nations Declaration on the Rights of the Child, um, human rights, right? Um, a right to sport, a right to physical activity, a right to physical autonomy, right? To get to choose what you do with your body and then to have opportunities, right? To be involved in a variety of different kinds of physical activities. Um, so that's not just organized sport, right? That's kind of the whole realm of physical culture. So I mean, at its most basic level, it's hard for me to understand why anybody would not have a commitment to diversity and inclusion. Um, and then if you have to make the case to someone, right? All of the research that we have shows this makes businesses stronger. This makes organizations stronger, right? When you have more diverse perspectives represented and you have people speaking from different lived experiences, corporations make more money, right? Like organizations are more successful in um, retaining employees and retaining members uh, when you have that diversity, right? Um, and I think, I think one of the best things that has happened in the last few years is the teaming of diversity and inclusion. And most recently, I heard someone talking about uh, diversity, inclusion and accessibility, right? I think that's important as well. Um, but it's one thing to say like, well, look, we have, we have some women, right? Or we have some people of color. But are those people actually included in your culture, right? The culture of your organization, the culture of your sport management department, the culture of your, right, head office? Um, are they just there, right? And are likely to leave quite quickly because, because they're not included? Or is this actually about making a genuine commitment to recognizing that the way that things have been done doesn't um, speak to everyone, right? And that you're missing, right? I always struggle because I don't necessarily want to make the market share argument. But like literally, if you only talk to white men in your advertising, you're missing a whole bunch of potential customers for your, right? For your product or your service. Um, but you're also excluding people unnecessarily, right? Like it just, it doesn't make sense to pretend that certain things are only for particular groups of people, right? So um, so that's why I think it's important. How I build it in, I mean, at the most basic level, I would say in um, my teaching in sport management, uh, you know, know if there's anybody who's actually had me. Um, I very rarely will use examples of the NHL, NBA, NFL um, or Major League Baseball. Uh, you all are more than enough exposed to the four uh, major North American men's professional sports leagues. Um, so I'm going to talk about different sports, right? And that's not even about people, but that's about pointing out, this is a sport management program. We say that you are going to be exposed to everything from community-based sport through professional sport. And the more global, right? The more globalized, I guess, we become. If you only know football, baseball, hockey uh, and basketball, so it doesn't even trip off the tongue. Um, you're missing the vast majority of sport that is happening in the world, right? Like you're missing these huge things. And you're missing the sport that people are actually participating in, right? Like you're missing that piece of it. To focus kind of only on that one level is so limiting. And it is not where a lot of you are going to end up, right? Like I know right now that it's where a lot of people are like, that's where I want to be is in one of those four major professional men's sports in North America. Um, there are only so many jobs in those places. Uh, so you know, for me, there's a very conscious effort to um, include, right, a diversity of sports and physical activities uh, in my teaching. And to highlight groups of people participating in sport and physical activity who don't often get attention, right? So like making sure that if we're going to talk about the Olympic Games, we're also going to talk about the Paralympic Games, right? Um, recognizing the differences that exist culturally in the sports that are important in different places, right? And Canada is such a great example of this, like because Canada and particularly Toronto and our little part of Canada is so multicultural. If you want to work in this area, right? Like you should know some stuff about soccer. Should probably be able to identify and like maybe talk about cricket, right? Like all of these various sports that exist that we don't tend to pay a lot of attention to the sports themselves, but it's also like a marginalizing of the people who, for whom those sports are valued, right? And I think um, the more that we pay attention to these things, the, but right? It's so important. And wanting you all to be able to go out into the workforce and speak knowledgeably and be experts about how to make workplaces more diverse and inclusive, right? And we know that the sport industry right now is making this shift, right? And it's going to take some time to see whether it's that genuine commitment or it's kind of a for the moment uh, kind of commitment. But you know, um, I had a student when I was at Kent State who got a job right out of her undergraduate degree. She went to be the Diversity and Inclusion Officer for US Swimming, USA Swimming, like the national uh, swimming organization. And without some of the courses in her program, a couple of which she took with me, right? That introduced some of those ideas, she would have never been prepared to go and take on that job, right? That's not a job that you go into um, simply because you have good management or marketing or PR or, right? Like event planning skills. There has to be a basic level understanding of social inequality, diversity and how to address, right? Issues uh, that currently exist. So in a sport like swimming, that is bizarrely white still, right? Yeah, so I, I think I addressed all the parts of the question, but I'm more than happy to have more conversation around that as well.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that. Um, I just wanted to make a really quick comment for Madeline makes the next question, but I'm so happy that you brought up cricket because I learned about that last year in my marketing class. Um, my professor had went to Australia for a little bit and just talked about it all the time. And that's something I knew existed, but because I didn't specifically participate in it, I never really looked into it further. But I'm so happy that he brought it up because it looks like a really hard sport. And I, it looks really interesting, too, and it's very popular. So it's just, I'm a person who loves to travel and don't really know where I'll end up. So just expanding my knowledge in that way, um, is, I think it's also respectful when you go into someone else's country and immerse yourself in their culture as well. So anyways, I'm just super happy that you brought that up, so thank you.
And I don't know if you know about, Australia hosted the um, T20 Women's World Championships, actually just as the world was shutting down, so right in the middle of March of last year. Um, and it set really incredible records for uh, live attendance at the tournament, viewing numbers uh, on all of the broadcasts. Um, so yeah, I mean, we're in this very strange and concerning moment where it felt like women's sport was on a good trajectory. And then we shut down. And then we have seen, you know, across the world, decisions being made about men's sport coming back and women's sport not, right? Like um, so yeah, but cricket, right? Is, and um, that T20 version of cricket, right, is the short-form cricket, not the cricket that takes multiple days to play. And it's been really interesting to see the way that the women's game has just really grown incredibly in popularity.
That's definitely interesting. And funny you bring that up, Brooklyn, because this semester I currently have that professor. So I'm excited to learn about cricket because as you said, that's something that has never been introduced to me. Just like a lot of other sports that are out there, like Professor Donnelly you were saying. Okay, so quickly, I'm going to get into our last question. And then we will open up the floor to any live questions or comments that anyone has. So what are some ways that we as students can help in reaching gender equality and being more inclusive? As, so as to ensure we are being more diverse within Brock University?
So just a small question to end it is just a little one. Alright, so I have a couple of things that come immediately to mind. Like we were saying, I think one of the best things that you can do is challenge yourself and your own assumptions, right? Check yourself when, you know, someone is telling you a story about a coach that they've had. And I mean, I do this still and literally gender is like my main topic of thought on a very regular basis. And you say, oh, was he blah, 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 right? Like you immediately assume a gender based on the role that somebody is talking about. In those moments, kind of having that self-reflection of like, okay, well, the coach could have easily been a woman, right? Like, why would I make that assumption? And I mean, it's a completely fair assumption to make, given, like you guys said, what you're learning about women in sport leadership roles, right? Like there are very few women in particularly high-performance coaching roles. We know that in youth sports, actually, the number of women coaches has gone down in the last 10 years, which is the wrong direction for that number to be going in. So I would say like, check yourself, do some self-reflection. Don't beat yourself up. Like there's no reason to, you know, think, oh, God, like, why would I do that kind of thing? But it's just about recognizing it and sort of thinking, yeah, I'm going to work on that, right? Like I'm going to work to change it so that I am broadening, right? Like my perspective and not perpetuating kind of some of these assumptions that get made. I think particularly as students of sport management, one of the things that I encourage you to really develop your skillset with now and continue with is being a critical thinker about any of these things, right? So anything that comes up. And so this is critical thinking, like not criticism, right? So it's not about, you know, like that sucks and this sucks and that other thing. This is about who's saying it? Whose interests are served by what is being said? What's the evidence to support the claims that are being made? And whose voices are we not hearing? I think those are such important questions to be asking about anything that you're hearing, right? Because so often I'll hear, right? Like, girls just aren't as interested in sport. Or women's sport just isn't as exciting as men's sport. None of those things are accurate, right? Like there's no, it's being stated as like fact. And the evidence that we have says, no, that's not the case. Like when the women's gold medal hockey game, right? Ice hockey game at the Pyeongchang Olympics in 2018 is aired in North America in the like midnight to 5:00 AM time slot. It breaks viewing records, right? Like when people have access to these things, they watch them. When they have access to games, they go to them, right? When women's sport is broadcast the way that men's sport is, with the same quality of production, right? Like around the number of cameras and the shots and the knowledge of the announcers, right? Like if they actually know the players that they're talking about or they're literally like, you know, number 24 passed it to number five. That's Jones and Rashid, right? Like know who you're talking about. Like, of course, that makes the game seem less exciting. You don't know anything about it. Meanwhile, I'm tuned into the men's game and I can learn what someone, you know, was doing when they were five years old. Or that this is the 47th time on a Sunday that somebody has, you know, accomplished this scoring feat, right? Like so I think always asking those questions, right? And whose interests are served is one of my favorite questions, right? Like this story that's being told, that women's sport is just naturally less interesting than men's sport, right? Who's served by that story? Well, it serves the status quo, right? It serves the way that things are. It says, this is the way that things are because they're naturally like that, right? So it doesn't matter what we would do. This is the natural order of things, right? Because change is hard and it costs money and it requires attention, right? Investments of time and energy. But that doesn't mean it shouldn't happen, right? So check yourself, critical thinking, and this kind of thing, right? Like the more you, like the more exposure you get to people talking about issues that you may or may not be familiar with, is just so important. And, you know, whether it's stuff that's happening through sport management or other places on campus. You know, taking advantage of all of those opportunities and sitting in those spaces and kind of thinking, you know, this makes me feel uncomfortable or I feel like I don't agree with this, but I'm not sure why I'm having this reaction, right? And then doing that kind of self-reflection. And I mean, like, I'm not a journal or diary keeper. Like that's not what I'm advocating for, but really kind of just recognizing those feelings in yourself and kind of taking a moment to think, why do I feel this way about that, right? Like what's the reaction that I'm having? And is it based on something that's true? Or is it based on something that I believe because it benefits me to believe it? I will leave it there. I feel like I could keep talking, but I don't know how useful.
No, that was amazing. Honestly, I could talk about this subject for a long time too. So don't you worry. I really appreciated your comment about checking yourself because it's okay to make a mistake, but it's how we react to it. Are we going to continue to make this mistake? Or are we going to reflect, acknowledge and make those changes? Because that's a completely different story.
It's not a mistake the second and third time it happens. Right? Like it's a mistake once and after that it's, this is what you're doing, right? You chose that.
You're choosing to stay in this path, yes.
Yeah.
And the, the comment too about women's sport not being as interesting is just a topic I could literally rant about for so long, but it's, it's true. We also have to, I feel like a lot of people that believe this are just following a trend without actually learning about it, researching and looking at the facts. Because women's percentage viewership went up actually as men's went down this past season. So it is growing, which is amazing. But we also have to look at what resources are we providing them? What tools do they have? Their broadcasting rights, like you were talking about on TV. I was doing on the project and there was like 10 channels with NBA games. And then there was one to two channels with WNBA. And that's only one game where the channels of NBA are previous, like either redoing the games or just multiple ones. So we just have to look at the fairness between that. Is it fair? Are the resources equal and so forth? And that will definitely, I mean, affect either side, so.
And when you see the coverage numbers, I mean, when televised sport comes out at like consistently less than 5% of coverage devoted to women's sport. Really? That's just, you know? And then that the vast majority of that other 95% of sport that's devoted to men is men's basketball, football, baseball and hockey, right? So it's not even the world of men's sport, right? Like it's such a limited perspective about what, what sports are important and valued, right? When that kind of coverage disparity exists.
Yeah, yeah, 100%. But yeah, so those are all of our questions that we got ahead of time. So thank you so much for, for answering all of those so wonderfully. I'll open up to the floor if anyone has any other questions or comments. This is your time. So just leave it open for a couple of minutes and see.
Yeah, even if you just want to reduce yourself and say hi, that would be lovely. You don't feel, don't feel like you have to have something, you know, new or exciting necessarily to say. I'm sure you do, but you don't. That's may feel like pressure.
I have one, if that's okay. Can you hear me okay by the way? Yeah, okay. So I watched this video recently and it, it was this woman coach in the NFL. She's an assistant coach. And she was kind of talking in the video, say about kind of certain words we use and kind of like she kind of feels like, kind of like we were past a certain point of using certain words. So like one example she gave is using the wording male dominated. So specifically the word dominated, right? And she felt like kind of there should be a shift to kind of male prevalent. You know, if you're saying male prevalent industry, right? She felt like it should be a shift kind of away from dominant and prevalent instead. Because she was kind of speaking to like to the, I guess, the angle of like, kind of nobody's dominating me in this role. I don't feel dominated by my peers, right? Which I feel like I, like I, I guess resonated with that, right? But I still understand from the perspective too of, you know, if it's like kind of you not deciding to be, to be hired or, you know, if there is like others kind of situations that would go on in a workplace, right? So what's your opinion on, I guess, like that wording shift from not dominated and then use prevalent instead?
I get it. It's now my primary concern. When literally it makes news that you have one NFL game in a season where there is a woman assistant coach on each sideline. Like that's newsworthy. Like I just clearly like don't have words. Like that's, it's 2021. And the fact that, you know, there was extensive media coverage of an NFL game this year because you had a woman assistant coach on each sideline and a woman official. And it was like, oh, right? Like gender equality, like not even close, not anywhere near like where we need to be, right? And I think, I think that male dominated makes sense, not in the sense of like domination, right? In that way, like on an individual level, but in terms of how power is divided in organizations, right? Like even when you have women in those roles, those women are assistant coaches, right? They're not always full-time. Some of the people that we're celebrating are interns, which is fantastic, right? But that's not actually like a paid position. And we're like, yay, it's incredible. They, a woman volunteered to be on the sidelines and they accepted her, like, you know, so I think that if we think about it more in terms of power in a like systemic kind of structural way and less about what's happening in, you know, one-on-one, like in one-on-one relationships, then domination still makes sense, right? Like talking about male dominated, absolutely accurately kind of says what's happening. I mean, it's very nice to hear that someone in a position, right? Where they are so significantly underrepresented, right? And marginalized in really important ways. Feels good still about her direct relationships. But I think it's sort of understates the larger situation to just talk about prevalence, right? Like prevalence is like 54%. And what we're still talking about is like 80s and 90%, right? Like men in positions and men in positions that are the primary decision-making positions. So that's how I would respond to that, I think.
I'm so happy you brought that up because that's really interesting. Michaela, do you have a comment or a question?
I, I just wanted to jump on and say thanks, Professor Donnelly, for joining us tonight. And I was just wondering if you wanted to speak more about your experience with Right to Play.
Yeah. It was a really interesting time to be with the organization. So Right to Play started, goes back to the Lilyhammer Olympics, Winter Olympics in 1994. It was, right, like Olympic aid initially. Then the International Olympic Committee, being the International Olympic Committee, said they couldn't use the name Olympic anymore in spite of it being a nonprofit devoted to sport for development. So the time that I worked there was right around the time that they started to plan actual programs. And so one of the most interesting things was to be kind of a sociologist and critical thinker in that role. Really feeling very conflicted about the idea of sending primarily white, middle-class North Americans into refugee and internally displaced persons camps in, on the African continent. Really kind of replicating a lot of like those colonial sort of development processes, right? And so one of the big things that I worked on in terms of the training for the people who are going to go and act as the coaches was around cultural awareness, cultural sensitivity, and really emphasizing over and over and over again, like sport exists in these places, physical activity exists in these places. People have their own, right? Like cultures of sport and physical activity. So this is not about, you know, basketball will be the thing that, you know, accomplishes, right? Everything we needed to, that really the way to accomplish that sport for development piece, where sport is the hook, right? Like come and play sport. And alongside that, we're going to, you know, do some work on HIV/AIDS awareness and prevention education, right? Or we're going to do some work on gender equality, right? And kind of how to address gender inequality or racism or whatever it is, right? So your sport is the, everybody likes sport comment. And then while you're here playing sport, we're to like tack on the development piece and do that alongside. And really pointing out that like literally if you're introducing or trying to promote sports that don't make sense in the place that you are, you lose the whole thing, right? Like you don't get to do the sport piece and you definitely don't get to do the development piece if people don't want to come and play that sport, right? So yeah, kind of recognizing that stuff, very much that idea, the, you know, whatever is about us without us is not actually about us, right? Like that it's about community engagement and asking people what the needs are, identifying it from a community perspective rather than assuming I know the answer, right? Like I know what will help and it will be soccer, right? Like whatever it is. So yeah, it was definitely an interesting kind of situation to be in. And then when we did send coaches out, so like I said, our first coaches went to Angola and the Ivory Coast. And they had some really challenging experiences. Like they were in places where people would have conversations with them about like, this is great that you are bringing sport, right? We need medicine. So this seems sort of, you know, less important than some of these really basic needs that still exist. So having to kind of navigate that, right? That they were there with a particular purpose and there was only so much that they were able to do, right? But then really sort of thinking about like, does this make sense? If people's basic needs aren't being met, does sport have the power that does sport have the power that we often attribute to it, right? Like can it do these magical things? If people don't have enough to eat and they don't have a safe place to live and, you know, they're separated from family and all of those kinds of things. So, yeah, it was a really interesting time. We made the, I was there when we went through the whole process of changing the name from Olympic aid to Right to Play. And the Right to Play comes straight out of the, um, the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of the Child, um, sort of pointing out that no matter where you are in the world, right? Like children have the right to play. That's something that is, should be a universal human right for children. Um, so, yeah, then it was interesting to see kind of a lot of the sport for development world shift to kind of that more rights-based, uh, argument. And the United Nations gets really involved with sport for development after that and, right? Like it becomes part of the Millennium Development Goals and, um, now unfortunately, a lot of that has shifted, uh, back to the International Olympic Committee. So, uh, well, it would be interesting to see what the future of sport for development is in that way. But yeah, was there anything specific that you had in mind?
Um, I just, I knew about the nonprofit, so I wanted to get a little bit more of your experiences with it and just your background. And it's really interesting to see that you were there throughout the transition to Right to Play. That was always something that stood out to me was like the name kind of just, it grabs you right away, like.
Yeah.
We do have.
Yeah. They did very slick marketing, that's for sure. Yeah, and it's also been interesting to see, right? Like there was, for a long time, it was a very like sending people from the West, right? To the developing world, um, and then much more recognition of like, you know, not everyone here has all the things that we're trying to bring to other places. So, um, you know, Right to Play does, uh, a lot more stuff now with indigenous communities in Canada. So there's a lot more kind of domestic sport for development happening, um, both, uh, rurally, kind of culturally with indigenous communities and also, um, in urban spaces as well and recognizing where there are fewer opportunities for play.
Well, I'll throw back to the girls. Thank you for sharing those experiences.
Thank you for the question.
Hey. Yes, both great questions. Was there any more comments or questions from anyone? Um, I'll leave it open for a minute, but while we're waiting, um, I just wanted to bring up Caitlin's question again. I don't want to put you on the spot, this is Caitlin, but, um, I just really liked that question or statement rather, because I'd never really thought about it in that way and I understand what she means on switching the terminology. Um, if you're comfortable, I'd love to hear your opinion as well. But I think for myself particularly, I understand one hundred percent. But I also think that the word dominated, as Dr. John Lee was saying, was not to be specific per individual. Um, of course, women deserve to be in sport. We have a spot for everyone in, in sport. Um, but I think it makes more of a point about what's happening. It's a little bit more of a firm word, um, and thinking about the overall market and all sports in general and just that kind of industry, I think, is what dominated kind of makes more of a point to, is what I'm thinking. Um, but yeah, I'm just curious if anyone else has opinions or is comfortable sharing too.
Um, for me, I mean, yeah, cause like when I heard it, like I kind of was like, oh, I love that. And I love kind of the shift of the meaning of the word, right? And like kind of say another an example, I don't know if I can say what it was, but she was saying, for example, kind of like breaking the, breaking the glass ceiling. And I guess that thing again of kind of like that, I guess, like you had, you've had to like force your way into it, right? Uh, but again, like and even kind of like after, uh, Professor Donnelly had answered, I'd kind of thought too, like she could have maybe had that perspective, just kind of, I guess, relative to, uh, kind of where, I guess, kind of her experience in the past and kind of her point where she had grown up and kind of, uh, you know, that time versus kind of now, right? Um, so I, yeah, I don't know, I'd say personally, and I think after hearing kind of a different opinion too, um, I feel like I would, I guess, still think too, like that, like kind of, like male dominated is the kind of uh, okay way to be using or like, you know, the okay kind of, uh, wording to be using. Um, yeah, I would say that it's tough because it's like you, like you get both sides, right? But like I, like I get to kind of like, and like, I acknowledge for sure that like, you know, like kind of what challenges could possibly, uh, be there still, right? That's what kind of dominated hasn't kind of, uh, it can't really be kind of peacefully buried at this point yet, you know? Yeah.
And yeah, I, I think it's definitely something to think about. Um, and I'm glad you did bring it up Caitlin, because it's not really something I'd ever thought too much about before. I feel like we hear that term all the time, male-dominated industry, um, even within Sbema, male-dominated program, that kind of thing. Um, so I'd never really taken more of a deep, um, look at the meaning of that word. And, you know, if there is a change of that term and that kind of stuff. So I think that's really interesting. So thanks for that.
Yeah, definitely. Looking at the, it's just nice to, that's the beauty of different perspectives. Cause for me, I'll hear male-dominated, I'm like, yeah, it's male-dominated, but I don't care. I'm going to work in the sport industry. I'm going to make a difference. And then you hear it from different perspectives and you understand, um, you look through a different lens. I mean, so I, we all appreciate you bringing that in and hearing everyone's opinions.
Yeah, it also is one of those really interesting things, right? Where sometimes women who get into particular positions, um, minimize potentially the challenges that they faced getting into those positions, right? Because there is often a like, you know, um, some concerns about being interpreted as like a, you know, whiny woman or someone who, you know, like she, all she does is complain. And it's like, that is not easy for a woman to have gotten into that position, um. But minimizing the challenges that are in place is, doesn't help us to ever address them, right? Like I think that's sort of the concern. And I, I was kind of immediately thinking about like, for the women in the group, thinking about like sitting in a big sport management class on campus, like